We will now call the October 1st, 2020 Board Meeting of the DeSoto County Schools to Order. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Keith Williams to lead this in the lead.
You are saying, "Fenton, Fluke."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's time to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Being no additions or deletions, do I have a recommendation, Mr. Russellton?
Madam President, I recommend that the Board approve the agenda.
Having Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Attorney for important.
Uh, Madam President, uh, we have one item that we need to be discussing in the Executive Session, which is a construction contract matter.
At this time, we will approve the minutes from the September 3rd, 2020, and September 17th, 2020 Board Meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes from other committees? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, and on the Consent Agenda, we have Items A through L.L. Are there any changes that need to be made at the consent agenda this time? On 16-9, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Russellton?
Madam President, I recommend the Board to approve the Consent Agenda.
Having Mr. Russellton's recommendation to approve the Consent Agenda, do I have a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we're on to new business. Item A is Architectural Services, Allen &amp; Hochul, C.D.L.L.C., new playground at existing L.M.S.
Yes, ma'am, we're requesting permission to enter into contractual agreement with Allen &amp; Hochul's architectural services as what is currently the Lewisburg Middle School Campus. Um, we need to construct a playground so that when the new Lewisburg campus is built, we can appropriate, age-appropriate playground equipment at the old school.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Russellton?
Madam President, I recommend the Board to approve the use of architectural services for the new playground at existing Lewisburg Middle School.
With Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item D is Permission to Advertise for Bids with New Playground at Existing Lewisburg Middle School.
Yes, ma'am, we're asking permission from the Board to advertise for bids with a new playground at the current Lewisburg Middle School.
With Mr. Williams' explanation, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Russellton?
Madam President, I recommend the Board to approve the advertising for bids, the new playground, the existing Lewisburg Middle School.
With Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C on new business is Waiver of War Policy G.B.I.A.V., Evaluation of Professional Personnel.
Yes, ma'am. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and to allow school districts more flexibility during this time, the Mississippi Department of Education has suspended the requirement for districts to submit annual employee evaluation data for 2021 school year. Therefore, we are requesting to waive War Policy G.B.I.A.V., which requires all district employees to be evaluated annually. This waiver request is for the 2020-2021 school year only.
With Ms. Hasselman's, um, explanation, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Russellton?
Madam President, I recommend the Board to approve the waiver of War Policy G.B.I.A.V., Evaluation of Professional Personnel.
With Mr. Russellton's recommendation for the waiver of War Policy G.B.I.A.V., do we have a motion to that effect? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Hasselman. Next is Personnel, Ms. Alletater.
Personnel update this afternoon. Painters went through three recommendations. Painters for the time, personal changes. Page six is a memo, um, the foreign teachers that have not been awarded this education their licensure, um, to be paid, not licensed, if they've paid, and those who have secured licenses, if they've paid. Page seven is a memo for myself, um, scheduled for two employees who work seven and a half hours per day for VCS. These employees are also paid by the city of South Bay to the service crossing yards for our schools, and X thirty minutes per day in that row. Page eight is a memo for myself, I'm a, um, athletic coach, um, so that he would include his college experiences, the coaching, I love his college experience with him, we were putting this each year to his supplements. Page nine is a breakdown of those experiences he had in college and his supplements. Page 10 is a request for additional pay from Miss Carolene, our Director of Federal Programs, on two employees that are teachers at South Bay Little School, who will both work as after-school tutors, not exceeding nineteen and a half hours per week, and be paid at $27 per hour. This will begin on 10/2/20 and end 6/30/21. Page four is a request for additional pay from Miss Ingram on four employees who teach at Horn Lake High School to work nineteen and a half hours tutoring each week at $27 an hour, beginning 10/2/20 and ending 6/30/21. Page 12 is a request for additional pay from Miss Ingram, from teachers, um, at Horn Lake Elementary School, they'll work nineteen and a half hours per day at $27 an hour, beginning 10/2/20 and ending 6/30/21. And page 13 is on this, all six of those teachers. Page 14 is a request for additional pay from Miss Ingram on one employee who'll work as an after-school tutor for the Palmer Home, she'll have the same rules of nineteen hours per week and be paid at $27 per hour, beginning 10/2/20 and ending 6/30/21.
With Mr. Alletater's presentation, do you have a recommendation, Mr. Russellton?
Madam President, I recommend the Board to approve Personnel as presented.
Based on Mr. Russellton's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve Personnel's presentation?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item E on the agenda is Residency Pay, Mr. Paul.
Yes, ma'am, I have one item to be discussed in the Executive Session.
And Item F is Student Discipline for Intensive.
Madam Chairman, we have one discipline matter to address in the Executive Session.
At this time, it's time on the agenda for the Superintendent's Chapel.
Thank you, Madam President. After our Board members asked a few questions and turned me the list of items to cover up in my PowerPoint, we've got several items to cover this afternoon with you. The notice, uh, everyone is wearing the pink for Rescans for Awareness Today. This is district-wide. Uh, our schools also are recognizing Rescans for Awareness Month by wearing pink today, and then obviously there will be programs going on throughout this month. But, uh, we, our Board members wanted to do this today, uh, the day of the Board meeting, uh, so they could recognize everyone. Early graduation requests, I cannot discuss these in open session, uh, because they involve students, individual students, so, uh, I've asked the Board to consider early graduation requests in the Executive Session later this afternoon. Executive Order 1525, uh, we received several questions yesterday about Governor Reeves and the mask mandate. Uh, yesterday, he, um, had a press conference and he did away with the mask mandate in public. However, 1525 did not change, uh, what is going on at schools. 1525 states every person in Mississippi should wear a face covering, covering the nose and mouth while inside a school building or classroom. So this is the same language, uh, that we saw earlier in the school year, and so, uh, even though we did receive questions, I'm sure you received questions as Board members, uh, but it did not change, uh, the policy that was already in place that Governor Reeves had announced, uh, during the summer months. One change that was announced, attendance should be limited to a maximum of 50% of an outdoor venue seating capacity or 25% of an indoor venue's seating capacity. Uh, the change there is the 50%. In the previous Executive Order, it was 25%, and, uh, what that did was you have one, you could have one quarter of the capacity, but now, and that will mainly apply right now to football games. Uh, our volleyball games, which are going on, uh, they were at 25%, they stayed at 25%. So the one thing that changed there was the, uh, was the passive outdoor events. This was also included, gatherings should be limited to no more than 20 people in a single indoor space where individuals not in the same household or in close proximity to each other. Um, and I will welcome all our guests who are here today, and, uh, we've been sitting like this now, I think, for about three or four months, and, uh, the reason that we sit like this at Board meetings is so we can have more than 20 people in attendance. If we didn't, uh, if we didn't have everyone separated by six feet, then we wouldn't be able to have our meetings like we do. So, uh, we do appreciate everyone's cooperation there and respecting everyone's face, and that is part of Executive Order 1525. School recognition money, uh, this, uh, has been in the news a little bit over the last few months, uh, when the budget was not passed and vetoed and things of that nature, uh, school recognition money was tied in with that. Uh, just to remind you about that, that is the money that our teachers receive, uh, if they are at A or B school, and so, uh, obviously, this is something we want to continue. Uh, Senator Michael Clenden was actually wanting to come and speak about this today, uh, but they were going back in session in, uh, January, and our, uh, local legislators worked hard to make sure this stayed in the budget. I did want you to be aware of it, though, because it, there is a change with that, uh, new state guidelines. Uh, teachers who were hired after the 2018-19 school year will not be eligible for school recognition money this fall, and that is a state guideline, so, Board members, if you're asked any questions about that, if it's somebody who was hired last year, and the reason that this is going to be tricky is because last year, the teachers who were hired in 2019-20 were able to receive the money, even though it was from the 2017-18 school year. So now, if you remember on this one, and once again, this is kind of tricky, this goes back to test scores from 2018-19, and so, uh, it's two years ago, so what they basically have said now, if you were not employed by the school district in the year 2018-19, you are not eligible for the money. And so, uh, any questions on that, because that is a little bit different, all right? And our finance department's working with schools on this project, finalizing the list. It is, it is more time-consuming, uh, it seems like everything's more time-consuming these days, and this one is too, because now they're having to go back and, uh, make sure, we just don't, we don't want any teachers to be left off of the list. We want everything to go well with this, and as you see, multiple teachers are scheduled to receive the school recognition money. We are planning that tentatively for November 20th, I believe that is the Friday before Thanksgiving holidays. We always like our teachers to be able to, uh, to get their, uh, money before that time, and so that is scheduled to go out on November the 20th. Student placement changes began October the 13th. Uh, starting at the end of last week, our schools were sending out information, uh, to all of their, uh, students, their parents, in case of ready student placement changes. We know that our, uh, students can switch from virtual to traditional, or traditional to virtual, uh, beginning on October 13th. The deadline, uh, to make those changes is actually tomorrow, and the reason why, and you see a gap there, October 13th is the day that we return from fall break, and that just went all the way through, we'll go back a couple, all right? The reason why is because our academic team and principals are going to be working together on student-teacher schedules for the, man, this, this slide is a happy slide. All right, let me just leave that old slide up there for a minute. But, uh, they're having individual meetings with principals, uh, of all the schools, because no two situations are the same right now. But what our principals are trying to do, and, and our academic team is working with them, uh, try to find, you know, what worked well, uh, first nine weeks, but at the same time, uh, what were other schools in the district doing, are there other, there are the things that maybe they could implement, uh, that other schools were doing? And as it says, their situations are going to vary depending on, and I've got them listed, the grade level, if you're talking about elementary, middle, or high, the total enrollment of the school, the number of teachers per grade, and I'll stop right there and talk for just a moment about that, because even if you're talking about an elementary school, uh, you could be talking about Lake former and walls where the student body is divided, the late former, uh, zone is divided into two K5s, and so you might only have, you know, 100 to 120 students per grade and only five or six teachers. You go South Haven Intermediate School, they've got over twice as many students as that, almost three times as many students as that per grade, and they've got 13, 14, 15 teachers per grade, and so it's just different depending on that. And then it also depends on the number of virtual students per grade, especially in elementary, middle levels, and then when you get to high school, then you're looking at the actual courses that they're taking. Now, when I was visiting a K5, uh, earlier this week, and I asked the, uh, principal, I said, "Okay, now what, how's your setup now, what are you going to be doing?" And she said, "Well, we've got, in our kindergarten, we've got a virtual teacher that's one of them, and that everybody else is traditional. In first grade, we've got two teachers who have virtual students, they've got less students in their class, and everybody else is traditional." And she said, "Second grade, everybody's got some of both," and, and the point there is a K5, school is, every grade was different, and we're just going to have one school, because it went back to the number of teachers in that grade and the number of virtual students in that grade. And one of the challenges that they were having, and this is another thing that we've seen, is that they had some virtual-only teachers. Well, the problem in that part came up because some of the students wanted to transition back this next nine weeks. Well, then when they transitioned that next nine weeks, guess what happens? Now they're not going to have the same teacher anymore, because that is a virtual-only teacher. And so, I mean, when we started looking at this, I mean, this, this is very, very complex as far as when students come back in and trying to do what's best for our traditional students, trying to do what's best for our virtual students, and offering the best education we possibly can to both groups, and so it's, it is, uh, very difficult there, but our principals are, are working diligently to get these schedules ready for the second nine weeks. They'll know more tomorrow, when they know the specific, uh, students have signed up to go in either direction, and then our academic team will be working with them and, uh, collaborate with their other schools to find the best options possible, so, any questions on that? All right, this slide kept wanting to come up here, all right. Uh, meals for virtual students, because we're talking about virtual students, and then go, we had a change this past week that you may have heard about. Uh, the majority of our parents are working during the day, and what was happening is, is we are, we were offering lunches every day to our virtual students at their regular school, but with the majority of parents working, they weren't able to leave work, or able to get their child to school for the meal, and y'all know how hard our child nutrition team worked, you know, during the fourth nine weeks, you know, standing outside and feeding students every day, and so this has changed, and now, what there will be is, is a pickup time on Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. Now, if you look at the bullet point before that, they'll pick up all meals at once. That's what they did this last week, is they picked up five meals for breakfast, five meals for lunch for the upcoming week. I asked how they were doing that, and they said they just basically have grocery sacks, and they set them up for the week, so that way they've got all their breakfast and all of their lunch, and then that way they're taken care of, because a lot of our students are, you know, working at night, I mean, working at night on assignments, because their parents are at work, and so this is more convenient for a lot of them. And then we do still have some situations where we have some parents that might not be able to pick it up this Saturday, and so our child nutrition team's working with them to make sure that all of our virtual students, uh, are having access to that. And the pickup locations are at Horn Lake Intermediate School and Olive Ranch Intermediate Middle School, excuse me, we have one location on the west side of the county, and one location on the east side of the county. They may have to drive a little bit further than that one day, but they don't have to drive there five minutes. All right, on to a couple of construction projects. DeSoto Central High School, the freshman academy is, uh, finishing up, is, uh, being completed, and they have actually started moving into that. Uh, that is a 23-classroom addition, uh, which is definitely going to help DeSoto Central High School get a chance, and we'll stop by, or we may, uh, go out there one day, uh, to see it. It's very impressive, uh, I was principal of DeSoto Central, and I tell you, when you're in that building, it's almost like you're in an entirely different school, because it's brand-new. Uh, DeSoto Central, I believe it was built in 2003, so the high school's 17-years-old, and now, uh, they've got this new addition that I know everyone's looking forward to. It, uh, it really does. And that one, that project started, if you remember, almost a year ago, it was in the fall, not, not in the, most times we start in January or February, but that one started last fall, actually. And Lewisburg Middle School, uh, they, uh, really coming along with that project there. Uh, you'll see that all three classroom wings, uh, you can definitely see those, uh, along with, uh, the band hall, the activity hallway, and then the middle, the gymnasium back in the back. Uh, that one is scheduled, uh, for August of 2021 to open. Uh, we'll see what type of progress they make, and, uh, we hope that it'll open at that time. If it does, then we'll have three elementary schools in Lewisburg instead of two, and then all the middle school students move to that campus. And we'll ask Jerry White to keep us updated over these next few months. COVID update, voluntary reporting, I want to, uh, you know, remind the Board, every, every Monday, we're putting these numbers, uh, of each individual school on our, uh, district website. We email the parents at the beginning of the year, uh, to let them know that we're going to be doing this. Uh, this has worked out really well as far as, uh, parents have access to this, we want to be as transparent as possible, so, uh, every Monday, they have access to the numbers. This past week, September 21st, June 25th, we had 16, uh, student cases. Obviously, you want to have zero, you don't want to have any cases, uh, but for a district our size, and I've looked at other districts, our numbers have been comparatively lower than a lot of other districts. These numbers here, the 16 cases, were actually the second lowest of the six weeks of school that we've completed. Uh, the lowest week was the first week, and we expected that to be the lowest week, and so, uh, we were pleased to see these numbers. Last week, we only had two staff cases, uh, during the week of September 21st to 25th. That was the lowest numbers of the year, uh, and that one, uh, you know, we obviously want to have zero there, uh, the two school staff cases for as many people as we have working in the schools, is a very low number that we're very pleased with. We're keeping an eye on outbreaks. I do want to, uh, tell you that as far as outbreaks are concerned, uh, the good news is, is, and you think about this, all the classrooms that we have in DeSoto County, and not only classrooms, but you get into middle and high schools, specific class periods, out of all those, we have yet to have an outbreak in any class this year, and so we've not had any classes where we've had three or more cases going on at one time within a 14-day period. And with that being said, what that's telling us is when a student has been diagnosed with COVID, and the quarantines go on, and they get tested, that they're not coming back positive. And so that's good, that means that, that COVID is not being spread in the classrooms. Uh, our coaches have been working hard with athletics. I will say, uh, that we've had two outbreaks, uh, with athletics. Uh, we had a football team yesterday, uh, that, uh, was our first football, uh, outbreak, and, uh, they will not be able to take part in any football activities over several days. Our biggest outbreak of the school year, uh, was in a volleyball team. We saw that, uh, about two weeks ago. Uh, we had, uh, 13 cases, uh, in a volleyball program, which is a lot, and that was something that the Mississippi State Department of Health can talk to us about, so, so we, we've been pleased that, uh, we haven't had more situations, but we've also been very pleased that the classrooms have been, uh, the most stable part of it right now. And I'm going to, uh, right now, say thank you to the parents and the students and the staff, uh, for following the protocol, because it starts at home with the parents. The parents, uh, monitor symptoms each morning, and then, uh, our students follow the proper protocol during the day, our staff follow the proper protocol during the day, and, uh, so we're very, very proud of what they've accomplished. Enrollment update. Uh, we finished, if you'll see the number on the left, that was our student enrollment in May 2020. Uh, we still have the regular enrollment, just like we did in March, even though we were not in school, but that was the most recent number from last year, so I used that. We were 34,737. There was a lot of, uh, speculation over the summer, a lot of uncertainty, because nobody knew exactly how many students would return to school, uh, in the middle of the pandemic. And so in August 2020, when we came back to school and our numbers got settled, we were at 33,823, uh, which, to be honest with you, at the time, you know, for a 2% decrease, um, 914 students for a district our size, it was not that big of a drop, one that we, um, you know, we were not upset about, considering the fact that a lot of people speculated we might even be below 30,000 at the time. But encouraging news that you will see there is our October numbers, uh, these are accurate as of today, uh, we are up to 34,81, and so we're up 258 students, uh, just over the last, uh, two months. Uh, we, you know, I was asking questions about that, and we've had a lot of students who've come in, uh, who've moved, uh, districts that are just offering virtual, and they wanted their students to be in traditional, and we've had the regular people who move in, you know, just like we always do during the year. So it's good to see that, uh, the DeSoto County economy is still doing well, and people are still moving into, uh, DeSoto County, and, and we're getting new students ready to learn. Collaboration, uh, wanted to let you know that, uh, we're very pleased, uh, to be able to represent DeSoto County schools on the state level. We've got Superintendent's Advisory Council up there, I've, uh, fortunate enough to have been asked to serve again on State Superintendent's Advisory Council, and, uh, that helps us, because we know from the state level, and we're able to collaborate with other leaders, uh, as far as what's going on, uh, around the state. On the Accountability Task Force, I've got that listed up there. Ryan Hurd and all is on, uh, the Accountability Task Force again, which is very important for us to have someone at that level. And, uh, pleased to announce that one of our elementary principals is on the Accreditation Task Force, Aisha Maxwell. She is the principal at Over Park Elementary School, I recommended her, uh, for that position, and she's on the Accreditation Task Force. If you do not know, we've ever had anybody, no one can remember us having any representation on that, so, very pleased, Ms. Maxwell's done an outstanding job, and we're pleased that, uh, she's on the Accreditation Task Force. Power School of Emsys, uh, met with attendance with traditional students and virtual students, and 70% varieties and everything else, uh, Power School in Emsys has been even more of a challenge this year, just like everything, there's more of a challenge for everybody right on, right now. everybody right now. But I do want to compliment Alyssa Green. We've got other districts who are contacting us. I tell them we get the best in the business there. As y'all know, with Power School and Emsys, she is helping us out quite a bit. We're working with other districts. We're all collaborating, our academic teams and superintendents, everyone on the learning management systems. We, this summer, I think it was in June, we spent all the school districts that had access to Cares Money, MBE, wanted learning management systems purchased in case there was another district-wide or statewide shutdown. And so what happened at that time was is, you know, thousands of school districts across the country were, were all bought into learning management systems. We use Schoology and then you've got Canvas and Blackboard and everything. And it didn't really matter which one you purchased because what was happening was all, everybody was trying to give the regular type of support you would get for that. And instead of them having dozens of new districts around the country, they were having hundreds. And I believe Mr. Keith said it earlier and he's right, you know, when they implement these, they usually do it over a two or three-year time period normally. In our district, along with everybody else, we did it in two months. And so, you know, it's been a challenge. There's no doubt about that. And we're working with other districts that are using the same platform we are. We're working with other districts that are using other platforms. And even the ones using other platforms talk about some of the same challenges that we do. And the main challenge right now and with that, and we all know, I mean, Schoology is awful perfect. Everybody in the room knows that. And we've got a long way to go with it. But it's just the time and trying to balance everything. And as school districts right now, I'm trying to navigate through traditional learning, distance learning, learning a new, learning management system, state testing and the COVID protocols. And I could talk about this all day, just all of the different things that school districts are having to maneuver through right now. The time is the big issue and trying to prioritize and make sure that everything is taken care of. And so, you know, we're making progress. It's slow progress, but at the same time, our people are working very hard every day to ensure that we offer the best education we possibly can. The difference in our district and everybody else's is, is we're doing that, but we're doing that for thirty-four thousand students every day. And so we're working as hard as we can to help everyone. I mentioned time and time is a big issue, no matter what school district you talk to, is finding enough time to get everything done. Our teachers and our parents and our students, everyone was used to time management when you had traditional. But now, and we all know, and y'all voted unanimously on it, I mean, we needed to not only offer traditional, but to offer a virtual option too. And so managing that time during that, I've came to y'all twice. I want to thank y'all again for two of the things that y'all have done to help us with virtual. But I do want to update you with what we're doing. The distance learning assistants that were added a few weeks ago, just to update you from there, we have now, our principals have hired seventy distance learning assistants across the district and they have hit the ground running. And the thing that the distance learning assistants, going back to the time part of it, I'll show you some of the tasks. And these are just some of them. They've got them returning emails about technical issues. And when I say emails about technical issues, teachers get emails about content during the day. The teachers answer those, but other issues as far as logging in, things of that nature, distance learning assistants are helping there. They're taking virtual attendance because the attendance can be difficult because the way that we're doing that is when you have students, because we're on an asynchronous model, that way we can work around parents' work schedules and everything else, you'll have students completing assignments all the way up until, you know, ten, eleven o'clock at night. And so when teachers are getting to work the next day, that was, that was another task that was taking up time for them. They're also converting assignments to digital formats for them. They're completing uploads to Schoology to help. And the main thing, and I think this is the last bullet there, is time. So what they're doing is, is they are taking care of tasks that was taking up time on our teachers. And so the more tasks that they can complete, that frees up more time for our teachers, whether it's traditional, whether it's virtual, whether it's both, to be working with all of our students. This was designed to help the distance learning, but I do think it's helping with all of our students. The other one was the seventy percent varieties, which this started last Friday. This will continue for the rest of the semester. Teachers remain on campus during that time, completing tasks to assist their students. And so the teachers stay at work, the students leave two hours and fifteen minutes early. I just have a few quotes here for you. This teacher said, "I was able to finish all preparations for the upcoming week." This teacher said, "Most call this seventy percent Friday. I call it Christmas miracle." Teachers have literally been given a gift of time. They have capitalized time in that one. "The time given to me Friday was much needed to do what's best for myself and all of my students." And how do they use that extra time? And I asked our teacher advisory council for feedback on that. I've just got a few things they said. Connect with them. Our virtual students upload video for the upcoming week, return emails from parents, held conferences in Schoology, graded assignments, had Zoom meetings, and the list goes on and on there. But while this is mostly for virtual, though, I do want you to know that our traditional students have benefited from that too. And the reason I bring that up, I know that y'all have heard from parents on the flip side of this saying, you know, I want my kid in school all day, you know, gotta make a lot of decisions to help virtual, what are you doing to help traditional? Well, the part about this is, is our teachers have taught traditional before. And so they, they know the traditional side. Teaching traditional or virtual, or especially both, is a huge learning curve. And so they do need that extra time during the school year. And I know a lot of our traditional parents want them to be in school all year and I totally, I mean, all day. I totally understand that. But with us offering the virtual option, we really need to do this to help everyone. I mean, was it the right decision to offer the virtual option? Yes. Was it the right decision to have seventy percent varieties, to work with kids first, to have the distance learning assistance? Yes, that it worked. And so if anyone asks you about that, I would just assure them, not only is this going to help the virtual students, but this is going to help traditional students in the long run. Also, a phrase I gave a few weeks ago was quality over quantity. Even though the quantity of hours may be a little shorter in the classroom, quality of instruction I feel like for our traditional students and our virtual students will be better when teachers have more time. Some national recognition that we're very proud of over the last few days. First of all, senior class of two thousand and twenty-one, already a very accomplished group. They've just started their senior year. We found out just a couple of weeks ago that we have twenty-four seniors that have been named as national merit semifinalists. And so that is awesome. We have got, that is the second highest total in the history of DeSoto County schools. And so we're very proud of those seniors. I will make sure that we get those seniors up here at some point. I'll say you get to meet them personally. Some other national, Youth Money Magazine, a national magazine, and this will be tied in with schools in a moment. Olive Ranch was named to Money Magazine's fifty best places to live. So congratulations to the city of Olive Ranch. Mr. Nichols, proud Olive Ranch resident, called me this weekend to let me know about it. But at the same time, he also wanted to let me know, and I read it in Money Magazine, "A big draw is the town's strong schools." There are only just a few sentences in there that actually mention the fact that Olive Ranch has strong schools. I was doing a Chamber of Commerce presentation on Olive Ranch a couple of years ago and we ran a report. And I believe it's thirty percent of students who attend DeSoto County schools have an Olive Ranch address. Because you have a few at DeSoto Central, but you also have the Olive Ranch, Lewisburg, and Center Hill school zones that are tied in with an Olive Ranch address. And since we're talking about Center Hill, I also wanted to mention Center Hill High School. You may have heard this, is that Center Hill High School received the highest honor that a school in America can receive, and that is a National Blue Ribbon School designation. It's only the third school in our school district that has ever received this. Only four schools in Mississippi have received this honor this year. So we're very proud of Center Hill High School to be one of those four. Only fifty-eight high schools in the United States received this honor this year in the entire country. And in Mississippi, Center Hill High School was the first high school to receive this honor since two thousand and eleven. So over the last nine years, there have not been any high schools. But Center Hill High School has now got that designation. So we're very proud of Center Hill High School and all they have accomplished. And as I told you, I had several things to go over. And so that concludes my superintendent. I appreciate that. I'm going to say that, you know, from a personal standpoint, and I speak for all the teachers in doing this, it has been a stressful time. Seriously, in a moment, as far as it takes away from your personal life and everything else, because you put so much into the schools. And, and I know our teachers, that's one reason why I want to thank y'all again for seventy percent varieties, because a lot of what the teachers talk about is they're not having to do as much on the weekend, you know, they're able to, to be with their families more. And so I think that that's a big part of it because everybody's so committed to doing that. We've got a great team here at Central Services and people out of schools. I'm just proud of it. And I do appreciate it.
Now is the time in our agenda for public comments. During the public comments, if you will be commenting on your student, your student's teacher, or your student's grades, you will need to be heard in executive session. Does anyone fall into any of those categories?
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you will be commenting on your student, your student's teacher, or your student's grades, you will need to be heard in executive session. Does anyone fall into any of those categories?
Are you saying specifically naming those students and teachers or just a general? Are you saying we are specifically naming those students and teachers or if it's just a general comment?
If you're not, if she's not talking about any specific comment that could be identified to those comments, I'm sorry, these students that could be identified to those comments would not be such a good thing for session. But if they can in any way, excuse me, I'm sorry, if they can in any way be identified to those general comments, then we need to hold that for that session. So now hard to tell without knowing what she's going to say. But we may have to stop her and get a stream. And we'd rather not do that if that would be, if that's going to be the case.
But we can't say the school we're at because we don't have to say any names.
You can say the school you're at. Let me ask a question, ma'am. You're not on the request to appear, correct?
I am.
You are on the request. Okay, that's what we're making sure of. We're making sure that it wasn't a public comment, that you were already on the list.
If you have.
You're on the list?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. What you're referring to, to those that were not on the list, that pulled a public comment?
Yes, exactly. If you have not requested to appear, then we'll want to make a public comment.
We have to see. When they're on the list.
Now we are on the request to appear section of our agenda. We have first, Mr. Brown. You have a facilities matter. We will see you in executive session. Mr. Hubbard, you are a transportation issue. We will also see you in executive session. Kayla?
Okay, we're just making sure.
Next, we have Kayla Tyson. You will have ten minutes to speak. Mr. Keith is one to keep our time. He will give you a one-minute warning.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Tyson. I'm a junior at Olive Ranch High School and have been a part of the volleyball team since seventh grade. I'm here to talk about VIP students not being able to participate in extracurricular activities, as well as my experience with virtual learning. I want you to picture a sixteen-year-old girl in your mind practicing all summer with her team, who she has played with for five years. Now picture her talking to her parents about how she won't be able to play her junior season because the school board has decided that she's unlocked to play because of their choice to have her virtual learn. Imagine how she feels and what's going through her head. Still imagining that same girl, understanding her passion for the sport she plays, and realize this is the reason she still continues to practice with her team, because she wants to better herself and because she loves her teammates. Now let's travel back in time to Thursday, August sixth, two thousand and twenty. Keeping the same girl in your mind, but put her in the setting of sitting in her coach's office and her teammates surrounding her. Imagine this girl telling her teammates that she can't play this season because her parents are having her virtual learn, because of the pandemic and the effects of what contracting the coronavirus could have on her family and her homes, who have underlying health issues. This girl has broken down in her tears and is emotionally drained. But it gets worse because when she leaves and gets in her mom's car, she is still crying and shaking uncontrollably. This sixteen-year-old girl is me. This is my summer. I truly want to remind her it's heartbreak. I honestly don't understand your decision to make this rule. My mom explained that she was told by Mr. Williams, the associate superintendent of business and operations, that the decision was made because of your concern with what VIP students are doing at home and not knowing who goes on their home line. However, the same thing can be said for your in-school students. You don't know what they do when they get out of school, or where they go, or if they are even being safe. To me and other VIP student athletes, this isn't fair. It honestly makes me feel like I'm being discriminated against for caring about my safety and the health of my family. I feel that the school board doesn't understand how that makes me, my parents, and other students that are affected by the school field. Did you know that volleyball season starts and ends in the non-versatile weeks? If my parents made the decision to allow me to return to school in the second non-week, I still would have made it to play. He may be thinking, if I could play volleyball, why can't I go to school? As I said earlier, we don't know what the in-school students do when they need campus. Going to practices and games, I would have less contact than I would if I were going to school in a traditional setting. Again, I was allowed to try out, practice with my team the entire summer, but not allowed to play. As a matter of fact, I am currently one of the teammate managers, attending home games, where I manage the scoreboard and liberal chat for J.B. and Ross and Danny. For that, I would like to thank Coach Rovall for allowing me to stay connected with my team and his encouragement and advocacy throughout this process. As this season is coming to an end, some may feel this is a moot point, but I needed my voice to be heard on this subject matter. As decisions should not be made with no concern for the adverse effects that may have on the student. As a virtual learner, I am disappointed by the lack of concern and commitment to my learning. There are certain classes where There are certain classes where I need to be taught the fundamentals of the subject. I have chemistry this semester, and it's very difficult when all my assignments are from my test, textbook. That doesn't help me. The first of the school I had chemistry assignment where I didn't understand why I got questions wrong. I even had my godbrother, a recent biology grad from Christian Brothers University, now working on his chiropractor degree, to go over the problems with me, and we both got the same answer. So on August twenty-fourth, I reached out to my teacher to review for the understanding. I reached out to my teacher to review for understanding. And after this morning, October first, I have yet to receive a response. August twenty-fifth, my mom sent an email to him expressing her concern about his lack of response to me. And again, after October first, no response has been received. There are twenty of us in my virtual learning chemistry class. It makes no sense that we don't have a Zoom setup or Teams meeting, so we can at least try and help one another. We have conferences via Teams with my counselor about concerns with the virtual learning process, and how the whole teaching is supposed to be doing Zoom, but that isn't happening. Defta is the only class where my teacher is recording, so I can follow along while doing my schoolwork for that day. Other issues include the workload not being balanced. Yes, I am at home, but I should not be working on schoolwork all the time like you, who are in school or working. Assignments are piled on instead of them being distributed, for a balanced workload across all my classes. The technical issues with agility are frustrating and causing me to get behind and have to play catch-up. I am not just doing schoolwork while I'm at home. I am preparing for the ACT quick test coach, thoracically looking at colleges, reaching out to college coaches, conditioning, and doing tutoring. I don't have to give, I don't have time to get behind. Yes, I am a junior and can independently work, but I cannot teach myself, especially subjects that I'm not familiar with. Changes need to be made. This may be my normal for the remainder of the school year, and I refuse to fail because adults refuse to reevaluate the decisions made and make a change. I want to have interaction with my classmates through virtual learning as well as in the classroom. I want to have interaction with my teachers. Make this happen so no child who academically will be academically the bar.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My husband and I are the parents of a junior at Olive Branch High and a seventh grader at Olive Branch Middle. They both have been students in the DeSoto County School System since kindergarten. Today I stand before you, having experienced emotions from anger, to frustration, to sadness, to empathy, because of the virtual instructional program, VIP. Most of what I say to you today will be a result of the daily experiences I have had with my seventh grader, as you have already heard from my eleventh grader. We chose the virtual learning path for this nine weeks due to the pandemic and the health and safety of our children and family members in our home with underlying health conditions. Virtual learning was an option given, but it is not a platform where students are being taught. Posting assignments with due dates was okay back in March when this pandemic hit, as none of us were prepared. But five months later, in the new school year, we should not be doing the same thing we were doing five months ago. My children are not being taught. In our surrounding area, there are private and public school systems offering VIP, where there is interaction with their teacher and classmates during the scheduled in-school class time. Why is this not what we are doing at DeSoto County? Why can't Zoom be set up during my child's class period, so she can be taught and have social interaction with the students and teacher in the traditional setting? Do you not realize the importance of social interaction for the mental health of our children? Do you remember your school age years and what they were like? None of us can begin to imagine and can hardly understand what they are feeling and going through because of something out of our control. The DeSoto County Schools has missed the mark with VIP. You did not properly plan for a virtual learning education for these students. It is a disservice to the students and does not show concern or commitment to their education. I was told in one of my parent-teacher conferences that DCS requires teachers to interact with virtual students via Zoom at least once a week. This is not happening. Another teacher said that teaching my classroom kids is a full-time job, and managing school budget is a full-time job, so I've been struggling to stay afloat. On one of my parent-teacher conferences, I could see the stress all over the teacher, and it reflects in email communication also. I try to encourage the teacher, as I can only imagine their plight. DCS, you are failing your teachers as well. Both of my children have classes where reading and retaining is required to be successful, but they also have other classes where comprehension is key to understanding. My seventh grader has a history and music class. The history teacher offers narrated PowerPoints per chapter, followed by a notebook check and test. This is sufficient for history. The music teacher has been spot-on with assignments and interactions since March, and continues to provide a great virtual experience. I asked my seventh grader, what classes do you need a teacher in front of you daily to teach? Her response was English and math. Why do you think she said English and math? Because these classes teach concepts that you have to build upon. If a twelve-year-old recognizes the need to be taught, why do adults not recognize the need to teach? In the DCS VIP expectations and requirements, it says, students and guardians understand the Mississippi Department of Education requires two hundred and forty minutes of daily instruction for all students, including those in a distance learning program. This can include recorded or live teaching from the classroom teacher. There has been no live teaching. Neither has there been recorded teaching from the math or science teacher. But there has been recorded teaching from the English teacher, which according to my seventh grader is not helpful, because it leaves her with questions that she needs to ask the teacher, but can't because it is not live. The Zoom calls are held three days a week at different times, which is disruptive to a consistent schedule, hence the importance of live teaching. Instructional videos. Per my seventh grader, these are helpful as they break down the concept for English. However, for math, they are not helpful at all. The plug-in answer concept is not teaching. She needs the teacher. I don't have a masters in education or math. I have a masters in business. I learned seventh-grade math in nineteen eighty-four. It is not taught the same. And although I use math daily, I am not a good teacher. I am challenged with the fact that everyone does not learn the way I do or at my pace. So imagine what it is like for a twelve-year-old girl to have her mom as a teacher. I know she does not like mom to teach her, because I don't like daughter-to-student. I want, I want the daughter relationship to remain loving, not be tattered by the mom-to-the-teacher and daughter-to-student dynamic. But as a parent, I have to do all that I can to help her be successful. Tasks, assignments, and/or activities. These have been plentiful and at times too much. In the beginning, our children were up and at their desk by seven-thirty, working, and while our seventh grader is sometimes working until midnight. Now, some of that was attributed to her not focusing as she should and getting off task. As the weeks passed and I observed more of her work habits and longer the workload, we made some adjustments to her schedule and see some improvement in time, but the workload is not balanced across the subjects. For instance, if science and history are forty-five-minute classes, then the assignments given should only take forty-five minutes, but they take on average seventy-five to ninety minutes. In the VIP FAQ, it states sample distance learning school day for secondary students six through twelve grade. Teacher check-ins. All students will be provided feedback and guidance through school budget. We have seen feedback in English only. Why is the virtual planning period not used for Zoom to teach whatever is being taught to the classroom children? There is no value in getting on the thirty minutes, asking the students if they have questions. I have listened to Zoom conference calls and held my tone because there are other students on the conference. These are a few of my observations. On Friday, nine-eleven, ten forty-five math Zoom, so the host has another meeting in progress. I emailed the teacher to advise. The teacher connected at ten fifty-eight and asked if anyone has any questions. My daughter asked what would be on the test, and was told everything they have been doing since school started. There was no teacher-led review on the previous Zoom Wednesday, nine-nine. Therefore, I expected the Friday Zoom would have been moved to Thursday to review for the test. On Monday, nine-fourteen, the teacher asked the students if they have questions. There was no formality for teaching a concept during this time. A student asked if Zoom could be used to show what is being taught next, as this was the first day of the new chapter. The teacher briefly went over ratios, then asked the students if there were any more questions. How could there be more questions when the teacher spent less than five minutes going over ratios? The teacher then advised they would be on the phone, on the line for fifteen more minutes, if there were any more questions. Science. One student asked why no one was talking. The teacher replied, we're waiting for questions. That's what we're here for. If you're going to stay on for another fifteen minutes, then teach something. But why would they? When the assistant principal said Zoom is not designed to teach. I was told in one of my parent-teacher conferences that DCS requires teachers to interact with virtual students via Zoom at least once a week. This is not happening.
Mrs. Hoshin, you've got one minute.
If I had to go to the office daily, I would be stressed, not fulfilling my obligation to my employer, worried about my children. I am fortunate to be at home at this time and hesitant to go back to work with the current state of VIP. No parents would have to pay for additional tutoring because their child is not being taught. I have always been an active, involved, engaged parent in my children's education. I am not a teacher. I don't want to be a teacher, and I definitely don't want to be forced to teach. Teachers have a special gift. I can only imagine how hard this is for them, and some of them are parents too. We need teachers. I am a parent, here to support and assist as I always have. And I am willing to use my expertise and facilitate a task force to improve VIP. I want us all to be successful, parents, teachers, and students. Thank you.
Next on the Big Voice Show, we have Michael Hindle from Northwest Community College.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for participating, and I appreciate this opportunity to come and speak for just a few minutes, get a quick college update to you. Just want to share with you, you do have, I believe, a presentation. Pack it there, in addition to a few other things. In your bag is also a viewbook about the college and just providing lots of great information. There also is a Northwest Ranger Inn on your bag. And on the flip side of that inn is a QR code that will allow students to take a virtual tour of campus, provide other information about the college, things like registration and the like. So just really quickly, this afternoon, we'll share with you some quick facts about the college, opportunities for the future as it relates to the institution, and particularly DeSoto County, DeSoto County Schools. So again, really appreciate this opportunity. I do realize that a number of you are Northwest alums, and so we thank you for that. Or you probably have a family member that has attended the college. Many folks out behind me probably do as well, or they themselves. So currently, the institution operates five locations there. You see the locations. Y'all will be familiar, I'm sure, well-familiar with our South Haven location. That's the DeSoto Center. We co-locate though. Ole Miss runs space at the center to be able to allow students to go to us for two years. Ole Miss were the second to get their bachelor's degree. And actually, students can receive a master's degree on-site at the DeSoto Center. So we're so proud of that continued relationship with Ole Miss. We operate a large service district, the largest of all fifteen community colleges with eleven counties we serve. Currently, we have an approximate seven thousand credit student enrollment. Fourteen thousand students, we will train them. We're doing that right now on the non-credit side. So that's very important when it comes to a county such as DeSoto County, where we're training so many non-credit business and industry individuals. Sixty-one percent of our enrollment is female, thirty-nine percent male. We're proud of the fact that we awarded, in just the spring semester, one thousand two hundred and forty-one degrees. We're awarded in two thousand and twenty. And something you may not know is that the majority of our students are university-track students. They're coming to us for hopefully two years, but most of the time, they would come to us for a year, two years, and then transfer to places like Ole Miss, University of Memphis, Mississippi State, Delta State, some of our most popular programs. And these are specific to DeSoto County students. So students who graduate from DeSoto County schools or are DeSoto County residents, these are the most popular programs that they avail themselves of. So things such as general college programs, general college classes, so they can transfer to university, nursing. Many students decide to take and be majors, business majors, or education, either elementary or secondary education majors. On the career and technical side, I just want to share with you that the most popular programs are practical nursing, medical office technology, and aviation maintenance technology. And that is a program, very successful program that we operate in Olive Branch at our location there. We're ranked one of the best colleges for online education, very proud of that. Again, was ranked one of the best colleges for online education this past year. We have nine residence halls at Centoka campus, building a tenth residence hall currently right now. And then we have ten intercollegiate athletics, for men, baseball, basketball, football, rodeo, and soccer. And for women, basketball, softball, rodeo, soccer. And a brand-new program, so very proud of this. And we have Coach Allison Burchett, who is the coach at Northwest now, but was a coach at Lewisburg. And so, man, we're so excited about this program. And she's kind of like a rock star when it comes to volleyball. And so we're excited about her leadership and excited to be able to play this spring. I want to share with you, and shift gears if I may, for a few moments, and just share with you about the college culture really briefly. Our college culture really centered around our why. And our why is really wrapped up in our college's vision, which is that the college transforms student lives, enriches our communities, and strives for excellence in its educational programs and services. We have a culture at the college based upon one college team that's comprised of ideal team players. These are the kind of folks that we're looking for at Northwest to come and work with us. And those folks are humble, hungry, and smart. We also have a culture that includes being a smart institution, knowing things like financials, marketing, et cetera, but also being a healthy institution as well. And those are things such as a lot of communication, low politics, and the like. Really looking closely, though, at Northwest Community College in DeSoto County. Want to share with you the average ACT score of our students that come from DeSoto County. Is the average ACT score is twenty-one. Seventy-two percent of our students are twenty-one years of age and under. Twenty-eight percent are twenty-two years of age and older. So we have a mix. As you would imagine, the majority of our students are high school graduates coming from DeSoto County schools. So thank you. We appreciate that very much. And in fact, over half of our student enrollment is comprised of DeSoto County school graduates. So thank you. We want to keep that up, by the way. So, and just want to share with you a few more numbers from this sheet. Total institutional aid that's given to county residents from DeSoto County, one point five million dollars. The other aid, eight point seven million dollars. And then there you see some total number of degrees that were awarded this past year for DeSoto County students specifically. We espouse, one of the ideals that we espouse is habit number two from Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. We want to begin with the end in mind. We know that there's not going to be an end for Northwest Mississippi Community College, but what we want to do is to vision out, look at programs and services today, and look out into the future and see how we may need to change and adapt to be able to serve. And so these are some of the things that we're doing. Want to share with you, we have a new facilities master plan, a new workforce training center that is in design currently in DeSoto County at our South Haven campus. And I'll show you a little bit more detail what that is in just a moment. Growth in workforce training and growth in academic degree-seeking students. The next page is just that, is beginning with an end in mind with regards to our workforce training center. This will offer flexible workforce training, cybersecurity, logistics, warehousing, and distribution training, transportation, nursing, and allied health programming, hospitality, resort management, regional testing center there as well. And that picture at the bottom left is a building that y'all know very well. That is the Career and Technology Center, the newest one that was constructed just a few years ago. And we have also, it's great, I saw Alan Hochschul on your agenda. We have also engaged Alan Hochschul as a design professional for this facility. It's going to be a ten-million-dollar facility and will allow for new programs, workforce training, but also career workforce training, but also career and technical programs, and also health sciences training. So we're very excited about that. Wanted you to know about that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments that you might have. But again, really appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. Really appreciate Mr. Russellton and his leadership of our board. As you know, he is Vice Chair of the Northwest Community College Board. And we became best friends when I was able to join the team at Northwest, serving in my third year now. And we're excited about the potential growth in opportunities and services and programs for our college. But most importantly, the reason why is for our students. And so we're excited about that, to be able to train and to have a family sustainable wage at the end of the result of all those training programs. So thank you very much. I don't know if I can take questions, but anyway, I'd be happy to or field comment or two, if that's possible.
We appreciate everything y'all are doing in the community.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. Next, on a request to appear, we have Sharon Ratliff.
Good afternoon, everybody. I really was not going to say anything, because I'm supposed to be at a parent teacher conference right now. I am a teacher. I'm a virtual teacher. I teach every day from eight AM to three PM. I'm loving it. I'm stressed out. True. I teach functional skills students. A lot of people think that you cannot teach them virtually, but you can. Depends on the strategies that you use. But I'm also the grandmother of a child who is in the DeSoto County schools, and I am also a former DeSoto County school teacher. Now, I thought that my granddaughter had it just, okay? The first week, she was screaming and crying, "This is not for me. This is overwhelming. I don't learn like this." I've been listening, because we've lost two young people in our family. One five-year-old, and the other one, what I call her family, she was a ninth-grade student that I had. She passed due to some impact of... So for me, it was a no-brainer. She was going to do virtual. And we have high-risk people in our family, at risk. So but then I saw how she was really acting out. And then I just showed her some strategies she could use. Because I'm going to be honest with you, schooling is just not the best platform of use alone. You should use teams with it. DeSoto County schools gets teams free, and the parents and the students and the teachers do. It's in the Microsoft Office app. And so all they have to do is go on Teams, set up a classroom, and start teaching. It's difficult. There is so much. I know that the... I have heard of two teachers. My granddaughter has a Zoom meeting twice a week with her math teacher and hers Mississippi Studies teacher. Never heard anything from English or any of her other classes. And so the principal told them to incorporate credit recovery, okay? Then they started reaching out to the parents. So here I am. My granddaughter, to my knowledge, has never lied to my knowledge, okay? So she was saying, I say it every day, because now I'm teaching, I'll be honest with you, and I go to extra amount. I've had students, we have a hundred thousand students at our school, okay? So that's really difficult, okay, to implement. But all summer long, we were offered training, okay? The teachers in the DeSoto County schools, they have not been given a fair shake. You can't just tell people the last minute, "This is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to do it." Schooling alone is not enough, as you heard with his parents and his other young lady, the student. That's called a sacredness one, okay? Sacredness is where you have the teacher teaching those students live. You're right there in a time, in a form, okay? So why not have teams? This is what they're doing in Metropolitan Nashville. Eighty-six thousand students are there. Day in the morning, eight AM to four, I mean to twelve, they're doing sacredness. The teachers are teaching. One to three, they have another class. One to two, they have another class. And then two to three, the kids are doing their work on school, okay? And they have it to eleven fifty-nine PM to finish the work, much like you. And they have, and a lot of times, they can turn their work in, I think, on science. But I'm suggesting this because I'm hearing you say that you have teachers who are teaching virtually, but the kids are going to come back to the classroom. Clearly, not that the kids, some of the kids know that because they have health issues or they have family members to do, and they really don't need to be in the classroom. They really don't. Neither my concern is, you said that Governor Reeves said twenty-five percent indoor capacity. So at the school that my granddaughter attends, what are they going to do? How are you going to get that baby twenty-five percent in the classroom if everybody decides that they want to come back? How are they really going to be able to do the social distancing? Now, the reason I was listening to my granddaughter, she really wants to come back to school. So at first, the school was saying, "Well, we're not going to..." I said, "Are the children going to be required to wear masks?" At that point, no. It was highly encouraged, because Governor Reeves had not issued that mandate yet. So then he issued the mandate, and they decided that's because they gave us that extra week, and the school did what they needed to do, sanitized and all of that, and to, you know, put little things down to keep the social distancing going. So I tried to get my daughter back, my granddaughter back to the school, because she really wanted that. I was helping my life to freeze, okay, and I still will. So here is the thing. Why can't the DeSoto County schools just have teachers who teach virtually the whole year? Parents say, "I want my baby to be virtual." They have to understand, this is not going to change. Your child is going to be taught virtually. That way, those teachers can keep their job, and they can keep their learning going on. But here's what needs to happen. It needs to be live teaching. It can be done, people. Let me tell you something. I am sixty years old, and for me, trying to learn this Teams platform has been difficult. But you'll be amazed how much the children can teach you in terms of implementing the different strategies that you need to use in there, okay? So you've got a free platform right there for you, Office 365. Your teachers can use it. Now, I've been told this free. That's what they say online. I assume it is. And you know, all of the children, they have access to Office 365. So I'm trying to understand, please. I'm just asking you to consider for the health and safety of our children, for their mental health, because even if they were online interacting all day like my kids are, and I'll be honest with you, I wish I paid a teacher from age of four. And then the teachers, I paid a teacher, told me, he's had a hundred students who would not submit their work. I said, "Well, have you reached out to them?" No, he hadn't, no. I have an English teacher who has never called my granddaughter, never reached out to her. He doesn't have office hours. He doesn't have any recorded lessons. So unlike them, this is ridiculous. My granddaughter, she is, because I trusted her and I know, well, she's always there. She's not going to learn. But she also said, I showed her, "Oh, I got it. Oh, this is going to be easy peasy," whatever, blah, blah, blah. She was only saying that because she was using that as a coping method, so that she would not continue to feel all of that anxiety and unrest. My granddaughter has ADD. So for her to just sit there and just pay attention, and she has a high IQ, but for her to just sit there and pay attention, that is boring, the way that information is. You're just sending out questions. You know, you got a book, you write. And we learned a long time ago that that is not how all people learn. That's good for refreshing, okay? But you know that generally, people need to hear C and generally, okay? So I'm just suggesting, why not use something, Zoom is easily hackable. It is. So why not just use a resource that you already have? Have teachers who can teach virtually and teachers who don't, until we get through this pandemic, because you know the flu season is coming up. What's going to happen? More weakened immune systems, that type of thing. So I have to go, because I have to, my parents are going to be calling me on my phone in a second. And I love it, because you know my voice, I've learned that I have very good parents, okay? And it really kind of opens you up and gets you an opportunity to see what these kids are dealing with at home. I love my students. So I generally have a problem with teachers who don't reach out to students who are not in trouble. I have a problem with it. When one of my students is missing, I get on my Google Voice and I call them. I mute my mic. My students are doing their independent work. I call those parents to find out what is going on. I had a student who was without a computer for three weeks. Every day, I was texting her to work and calling her in the evening and going over the work with her. That's a teacher. And I'm not patting myself on the back, but those are the kind of teachers I have. I was a national leader in my prime, okay? I came from a blue ribbon school. Of course, that's nineteen seventies. But the point I'm making is I'm no good teaching, and I have only been a teacher for what? Since two thousand and seven, okay, since two thousand and seven. So these excuses about teachers not reaching out, that's a teacher issue, okay? And you need to mandate where, and I'm just saying this. Some people are going to be virtual. Some are going to be non-virtual. They're going to be traditional, so that everybody can have equal playing field, because these kids are not being taught, and they should not be penalized because their parents are trying to protect their safety. And I have to go before, so I can go off and compete with my parents, okay? Thank you.
All right. Next, we have two requests to appear is Steve Douglas with senior information from Grandwood Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Professor Russell, and the board. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Hank and I are here representing our company, Perch Young and Grandwood Services. And we want to give you an update kind of where we are in this pandemic unprecedented time. This is full history about myself. This is my thirty-eight year in this business. I had the privilege of working in DeSoto County back when there were four schools in this town. Now I look at it, it's just amazing what's going on here. I have the utmost respect for this county and all the schools and administrators. You know, one thing I want to say before we get into the nuts and bolts is that we work with over two hundred schools, just about every school. And everybody always asks me, "What's DeSoto County doing?" You know, and they want to keep up with what's happening here, because your test results, they, you know, they want to know what's happening here. So we're very, very proud to be a part of this. Also, want to commend the schools this year on how they handle graduations. Thirty-eight years, I felt, oh, man, I don't have any graduations over the years, more than I can handle. You know, we're talking about technology today. When I first started, we used PGP. We didn't really have computers and things like that. So now here we are in this, with all the circumstances that we're under in that. But I want to commend the schools, because when this came up in March, we were bouncing around the office. We ranged forward all the time. I talked to people all across the country. We have friends all across the country who did the school business. And I use this as a record here in this county a lot. What are we going to do? My mom and dad were admitted. My dad was a high school principal, but was a teacher. And I remember talking to Hank and everybody in the office. I said, "They will find a way to graduate these students." Because teachers scared, administrators scared. I mean, I've seen some of the most scaring people in this county that come to me when a student needs help, and we've always helped. They come to us, and they know when the student's in trouble or doesn't have the finances or whatever, they'll come to me and they'll ask, say, "Would you help?" And it's because they care about the child and care about what they do. But their commencements were, to see how they did this and the extra efforts the principals went through, the time they spent, I don't know how they did it. They needed about three weeks off after that, I know, because they used to do it in about an hour, hour and a half, and took them days. So again, I want to commend them on that. The other thing is, is how we are setting up to handle this. I want to thank you too, because I may miss the things. This has been a challenge for us. Our offices, we've been over backwards trying to figure out ways to try to get to students. Our business model has definitely been severely interrupted. You know, we still can meet, we always would come in and meet with the class, present, hand out information, and then we would come back on a certain date and take orders. And then we were set up to come back at different times to help parents who may not have the money or the funds at that time. So this has definitely been a challenge. So we have outsourced virtually. We found a young lady who was Miss South Carolina of all things, a beautiful girl, but she was a professional. She worked for a Ford Motor Company and then laid off. And so she was able to put together a video session for us. It has been very helpful that we have this set up where we can get to the parents to help us communicate all the information we need to get to them. We also have online services where we can take orders online. We also can take orders in person. We want to make sure we always practice social distancing when we do that. That's something very important to us, that we do that, maintain, you know, we do it properly. So that's something else that we do. I will praise to you that this is definitely, we don't know how this is going to end up this year, but we will do everything in our power to make sure that every student has what they need to graduate. And like I say, this is one time I will do no graduation dates, even didn't say it. And so that's forever. Well, the thing is, is that a lot of our items have to be manufactured. And it's not something we keep in stock. Some things we do, some things we don't. A lot of items are custom-made for each individual school and for that individual family. So it's, you know, we have to have an X amount of manufacturer time, so it's definitely going to be a challenge. But I think Hank, I'm going to turn this over to him in just a minute, because he's done a great job setting this up with all the principals across the county, getting this set up. And we'll see how it goes. And we're going to do everything we can. And I want to praise to you that we're here for you and for your families and for your services. We're here, all we have to do is call him. If you need something, you call, get ahold of Hank or myself. We'll figure out something, some way, somehow, in any situation. But this time, again, I want to thank you. This is the first time I've ever had the privilege of talking to the board. I talk to Mr. Russell quite a bit, but it's an honor to be here tonight. The last time we were here, we'd made a special diploma for a World War II veteran, which was, I will never forget that. That was one of the high points of my thirty-eight years of my career. It was a great honor to be here and be a part of it. But I guess if you have any questions, we're afraid I will let Hank talk a bit. I know he wants to say a few things. But again, thank you so much for all you do for us and for our company, and appreciate the opportunity to be here.
I'll be brief. Again, thank you for letting us be here. What I wanted to get on something that Steve doesn't get the opportunity to do like I get the opportunity to do is, he said, "We work with over two hundred schools," and we do. And we work with schools from Union City, Tennessee, to Daxte, Mississippi, independent schools, colleges, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. And I'm fortunate enough that I'm more flexible, and I'm able to go into all different types of schools. And I'm privileged to be able to sit here and talk to y'all and be able to tell you. I wish I had the administrators here to tell, but hopefully y'all can take it back to them. It's not the same way that it is in DeSoto County everywhere. Y'all got a great situation. You can go thirty miles north, south, east, or west, and it's not this way everywhere. When I'm talking to kids, whether it's elementary kids, middle school kids, or high school kids that are complaining about the current situation, I can, you know, easily tell them, "I'd be glad you could come get the car, then we go to wherever you want to go and show you how, just how unorganized some other districts are and some other situations are." But to know that all y'all schools are running to the highest caliber clean, you've got people who care about it, just like Steve talked about. You've got administrators, all the way from the principals to the principals, God of Town in particular, who know the students' names, know students' families. And it just feels like home when you go to any school in DeSoto County. So I want to commend the board. This crowd manager, I know he has a big part in getting all the people, places they need to be. But it just feels warm whenever we'll be on to any school in DeSoto County, whether it be the elementary school, or the high schools, or the middle schools, or Southwest. But again, we're able to take everything we sell online. We can do it on the phone. We can do it electronically. We can do it by Zoom. We can do it by demo. We're able, we're set up to go any direction y'all need us to be. We're looking forward to a great school year. We work with a great graduation season. And anybody who has any issue or anything coming up between now and graduation, we're here to help, been over backwards, been over again. I appreciate y'all letting us be here and speaking. It's a pleasure to be here. And anybody has any questions, please reach out to us.
One more thing I failed to mention that I think is important in this environment too. I've been taking so long, I'm just slipping, you know, I hate to. One thing that we do too, that I think in this situation especially, because I know a lot of families are hurting and they're struggling. And we've got a system set up now where, and we've had this prior, but probably a few more episodes on it this year than ever before, where a family can make payments to us. And we've got a system set up now where, and we've had this prior, but probably a few more episodes on it this year than ever before, where a family can make payments to us. We get thousands of payments a day and it's interest free. There's no finance charge, you go straight to the principal or whatever the principal of the amount of the balance of whatever they want. So we, and we work arrangements with them, I mean, I've done this in the past where we set up arrangements where it's the last minute and a family may owe money. We come up with some type of solution for that child in March. So that's something else that feels important to me. But again, thank you all so much for allowing us to be here.
Thank you. Now we have Cassandra Wood.
Good afternoon. I am a new resident in Sosa County. My daughter now is going to take the M E B O program. Prior to, we are taking the M E B O program, resident, she attended school with party bill, middle, we had party bill over, party down low school. Prior to we are taking, I did some research in Sosa County schools and I was pleased with what I saw on the website as it relates to educational excellence. However, I'm not seeing that at all, correct? I'm not seeing that at all. Since the beginning of school, my daughter has had one Zoom meeting with a teacher. So I'm communicating with teachers and that's usually us reaching out to them, not them reaching out to us because we have questions, we have concerns. I chose the virtual program because of COVID-19. I've been working at home since March, I'm with FedEx, I've been working at home since March due to COVID. And the possibility of being in shared spaces with other people, a lot of it is in restrooms, cafeteria, office environments. Would be the same thing for her if I were to send her to school. So based on that, I decided not to send her to school, especially after reviewing the VIP program, which made me stated that we were going to get some things that we are not getting, you know? Almost as if all of that is really false, okay? My major concerns with the virtual program is there's going to be live instruction. Absolutely none, there's going to be live instruction. You cannot have a student in core classes that they're going to be tested on, such as history, algebra, anything in the sciences, and there is no live teacher. My daughter is taking the E T T next month, not sure how she's going to do on it because she's not getting any, any benefit from algebra two right now. She's also going to be tasked to take us in history and stuff, okay, which is a Mississippi department. How well is she going to do on that because she hasn't had any instruction in that? She doesn't have any instruction in that. My second concern is with s u o l o g y, and I know a couple of other parents have talked about that, that is really insufficient, really inactive too for learning. I did a little research on that as well, and the reviews on that are mediocre at best, okay? It's an online grade book with the ability to create assessments and rubrics and keep track of student performance. As a part of our school unified classroom solution, s u o l o g y continues to ensure that all students have access to the same quality of teaching, learning, regardless of their socioeconomic status, special needs, or other circumstances. We're not seeing it with s u o l o g y. I also, at the advisement of a former, the Sosa County Schools Administrator, was a director to the Mississippi Department of Education. And I read a news release that in August the sixth, twenty twenty, that stated that, um, that the schools were provided with a hundred fifty million dollars to district schools to pay for computer devices for student teachers, as well as for software to deliver instruction. Enhance internet connectivity and professional development for digital teaching and learning. Additionally, the Mississippi pandemic response broadway availability act provided fifty million to distribute to help expand internet access. And lastly, the legislature also allocated a hundred and thirty million from the equity and distance learning act to school districts based on student enrollment. To help cover funding gaps, the legislature said that another twenty million to be distributed to districts based on need. Now, the superintendent mentioned something about learning assistance. We haven't made contact about learning assistance for any class at South Hagan High School. So if that is, to my knowledge, it hasn't been communicated to myself or to any other parents because I've contacted several parents here in Sosa County schools. The progress that I personally would like to see as a parent and as a taxpayer resident here in Sosa County. I need to have virtual instruction for all core classes for my daughter, at least three days a week. She deserves that in algebra, in science, and in history. I would also like to see an improved communication between the parents as it relates to the Sosa County schools, the teachers, the administrator, the school board, and the superintendent. Because the second week of school, I've reached out consistently to the school board. Nobody ever called me back, I left my name, left my email address, I never got a phone call back, okay? I've reached out to the school several times, they are very sporadic in communication, sometimes they'll call back, sometimes they won't, the same issue with the teacher. In closing, I'd like to say that it's really unbelievable that there's a taxpayer resident here in Sosa County. The citizens, the parents that are here today, as well as several parents who have Facebook pages about this virtual program. Are being tasked with advocating for our children via a petition, the local media, and appearing here before the school board. There are a lot of things I could be doing right now, but because my daughter's education is of the utmost importance to me, I felt I, I had to be here today. And I'm very hopeful that it's not going to fall on deaf ears. I'm very hopeful about that. The Sosa County schools, the Boy Education Evangelist, the Educational Excellence here, it's on every website. It's on every website, and I feel like the form to be here today, it was on the website. Well, I need to see that with the virtual program. I need to see that with the virtual program because our students deserve the gift of quality education because they are our future. And all I'm seeing or hearing is the focus is on the teachers, not the students. Especially as it relates to this virtual educational program. It honestly has the wrong name because virtual shouldn't really be in there because there is no virtual, there's no. So thank you for hearing me, and like I said before, I am trying to be very optimistic that not only what I'm saying, but what these other parents are saying is not going to fall on deaf ears. Because my child's education is theirs. Thank you so much.
All right, next up we have Ken Thompson with the medical task force update.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Bring one that does Adobe, just a little bit of background quickly. I am, I've been here fourteen years in Sosa County. I work up at University of Tennessee, teaching the residents and the medical students. I'm also the medical director of EMS for Sosa County, the Sheriff's Department, and our detention facility. So we definitely have a lot of experience with COVID here over the last six months. But I guess more importantly, I'm also a father. I've got three children in three different schools in Sosa County currently. I became a member of this medical task force, I guess after setting up the meeting with Mr. Hustleton this summer because of concerns about logistical challenges of the upcoming year. We were all caught around here in that first part of the spring there, and so we wanted to at least try to make sure that things were better this fall in case things were to really turn south. I left that meeting feeling very reassured that this board and Mr. Hustleton and his staff were very aware of all of the concerns, both medically and, and logistically. And knew that they were going a hundred and ten percent in an effort to try to make sure that this, this year went off with as, you know, few problems as possible. Given the immense nature of this problem dealing with. So the other thing I guess I was impressed with is how flexible they seem to be as far as realizing that this is such a novel problem that we're dealing with. That there is no one right answer, that there's so many different ways to handle this, and you've got to be flexible and adjust given the data and how it changes. So I do want to commend Mr. Hustleton, Nurse Patsy Davis, our teachers, and our unsung heroes, all the custodial staff who are there every day trying to clean those schools and keep our kids as safe as they can. And don't always get the credit they deserve. So as far as being on the task force, we've met in person, we've met virtually. We try to be very agile as far as when a problem occurs, we try to figure out the best way to primarily keep our staff and our students safe, but also to get these kids back in school as quickly as possible. So we don't want to quarantine them any longer than we have to, for example, trying to legalize some of these antibody tests if your child happens to have an exposure in their class. But they've already had the virus, let them get that antibody test and show that they've got some immunity. We try to work with them to get them back in the class, they're learning in person as, as much as possible. So our numbers so far, Mr. Hustleton went over those earlier, I think it's very impressive. You know, we've, we've had an exceptional, uh, performance here in this county and it's only getting better. You know, you heard that last week we had sixteen students and two staff members test positive. So I got on the Mississippi Department of Health's website and, for example, Rankin County, which we're number one, we have the most students. But Rankin County is number three, they have nineteen thousand students. And the way they do their numbers are a little different, we're a little more transparent apparently in Sosa County. If there's one person, we put one there to try to keep some anonymity for a student if they do test positive. If it's less than five, they're just going to say one to five. So you don't know if there was one or two or three or four or five. So I just average those numbers. But in Rankin County that has nineteen thousand students, again, we had sixteen students and two staff. They had forty-three students test positive last week and twenty-one staff members. Harrison County, which has less than half the number of students that we have, fifteen thousand students, we have thirty-four. They had fifty students test positive last week and twenty-one staff members. So I think if you look at those numbers, we are doing something right here. And I would say that, you know, yes, we are the largest district in the state, we're also one of the best, if not the best performing in the state. And truly, that's something to be proud of. I mean, we really got to give it to our staff, everybody, top to bottom, teachers, et cetera. You know, it's, it's been hard. Medicine, as well as education, is kind of a culture, and a culture is not something that's built overnight. It takes a long time. And this culture with our kids and the masks and all of these precautions and PPE, uh, social distancing, it's not going to happen overnight. Kind of like this virtual learning, it sounds like that's a very big cultural shift too. And, you know, this, these are things that are really challenging for all of us, and I think everybody's doing the best they can to, to, you know, take these problems head on. We can't let our guard down, flu season is just about to be upon us, so it's going to be a whole different chapter that we're all going to have to deal with. But I feel very confident that, that the, the board here and the staff and everybody is up to the challenge. And we're all going to adjust and do what we need to do to take the best care of our kids possible. So this is very uncharted territory we're at right now. But as a medic professional and a father of three kids here in Sosa County, I believe the board and the staff have done a fantastic job navigating our kids through, through this pandemic. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
All right, next we have Darkness Jeffrey.
All right, well, I'm going to try to make my own assurance because most of the parents have pretty much said some, some of the things that I was going to say or pretty much everything. I started a petition about a month ago, and that petition was because I saw a lot of parents on social media, uh, just really forcing their frustrations, their, their concerns with what's been going on with the, the virtual learning. And so instead of us going back and forth, talking amongst ourselves, I wanted to just start a petition, see if I can get these parents to sign, so it can be heard. And that petition has been out for about three, four weeks now, and I got over nine hundred thirty signatures. I've done interviews with everyone from channel three, five, to thirteen. And that was just to be heard and for people to realize that I'm not the only parent that's concerned with this. Uh, in my petition, there was a lot of things that I suggested as far as how virtual learning could work for the teachers and the students. Again, this wasn't, it was called teachers interacting more, but it wasn't, um, really saying that teachers aren't doing their job. It was more of the system in place, and that's school. And I think we, a lot of these questions here, including myself, have talked with that. There's been a lot of issues with school, software issues, um, questions on quizzes that are still being marked wrong, links to testing appear and then disappear. Even some, even some else sometimes that would be corrected later, overdue assignments, things like that. Due to students not doing the work, my child is an eighth grade student and at Center Hill. And basically, sometimes it takes two or three hours before we can get a response. And we understand that teachers cannot respond while they're in class. However, there needs to be some kind of virtual learning hour, segment, session, or something to where now they can focus on the VIP students. The seventy percent Fridays that, that they have now, that's, that hasn't benefited my child at all. I don't know exactly, I've heard some things about how this is working for virtual learn, not mine. I haven't interacted with anyone, not once, from any teacher, from Center Hill Williams School, we're in week seven now. So all the talk about everybody's doing the best they can, I think people need to kind of speak for themselves because me, I'm not seeing that. The only time I have talked to any teacher or the principal, I have talked and spoken with Mr. Hood once, it was a good conversation. However, um, it's an email that I would have to send. If I don't send anything, I don't get anything back, and sometimes I don't get responses. All I'll get is I'm sorry, or I didn't get that email. And the issue is, my, my daughter's a smart kid, she gets, for the most part, however, if there's a question, it can mess up the whole day. Because we don't know when we'll get that response, we don't know when she'll be finished. And as far as these extracurricular classes, my daughter is also in band. And she's missing out on something that she wants to be a part of right now, but she can't because she's not going the traditional route. And there's auditioning or something at the high school, I was just told about, there was no communication. I wouldn't have knew this if I didn't email the band teacher myself. And he is the only one that has called me, the only one. I put my number out several times, other teachers, I haven't heard a thing. The hybrid thing that we got emails about in June, July, I think that's something that should have remained an option. I say that because there's some classes students can get through virtual, no problem. And there's other, there's other subjects where they may need to be in that classroom on that day. That's just something I thought I would throw out there though. My suggestion for the virtual learning was, I've talked to certain teachers on social media who say they don't want to be live streamed all day. But I thought it was about the students more so. And if they were to put, I don't know, a camera on the board, um, the teachers don't have to be recorded. And if it's on the board, it's not on the students either. So students who are in school traditionally, their parents can't have a problem with it, they're not seen, that they're not recorded. Those were just things that I threw out there in my petition. And again, um, I find it very odd that today we just get to speak to you all, but tomorrow we have to decide if we're going to opt out. Really not enough time. So I kind of want to know what's going to happen. And I kind of need to know what they said because I hadn't done a thing yet, but I don't know what to do. And when I see my child crying and upset, thinking that she doesn't get it anymore, or that she's behind, how are these other students passing and how they're getting it, and I'm not, and she's passing. However, the issue is she's not learning. And some kind of live streaming helps that. And it was told to me in emails, a live instruction or some kind of weekly interaction or that. I haven't interacted with anyone, again, not once. So, look, some of these teachers are doing their job. Again, I love teachers, I appreciate them, they're the most underappreciated people in the world. Overworked, underpaid, pretty much all the time. However, they have degrees. I want my child to have one too. She can't get that if she does not get the proper education. And, um, that's pretty much all I got. I, I'm a concerned parent. I mean, anybody that goes on television two or three times, puts out a petition, answers the phone calls, the people who want to put things in the paper, this is just because I'm concerned. And I don't know what I'm going to do as far as if she's going back to school or she'll continue to stay at home. But I know she has not got the proper education at home, she just has. And it's not fair for me to just say, go back to school, that's the only way you're going to learn. That's a high risk that I'm taking and I'll overrule. That's a high risk that I'm taking and I owe reward.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Michael Bellapanni from North Central Connectivity.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Usleton, Board. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to address you. I'm here today to talk about Internet connectivity. Employed by North Central Electric Cooperative. We're an electric co-op that is member-owned and not for profit. And we serve roughly 26,000 residential meters in DeSoto and Marshall County and parts of Tabor Bay. Roughly 65% of those meters are in DeSoto County schools. Back in 2016, our board of directors and management elected to construct 80 miles of aerial fiber between our substations that would better enable us to employ smart grid technologies in the home as well as manage our system with the SCADA system where we better be able to respond to outages and a lot. That 80 mile fiber ring is of great use to us, but we only need a little bit of it. There's a lot of what we call dark fiber in that ring and that's unused capacity. And during our strategic planning, maybe in 2016, it was decided that we needed to see what we could do about that dark fiber because back then we were hearing from our membership that there was a great digital divide. There was a lack of Internet connectivity with southern part of DeSoto County and virtually all of Marshall County. So at that point, we began work, spoke with several telecommunications companies about the possibility of leasing that dark fiber to them and be able to employ broadband in the area in our service area. Being a member-owned, not-for-profit cooperative, as you can imagine, dealing with a for-profit telecommunications company wasn't a good fit for our company. So it felt like we had to take a different route. And in 2019, we were very fortunate to get passed at record time the Mississippi Broadband Enabling Act, which gave electric cooperatives the ability to enter into them. Shortly thereafter, North Central announced in February the launch of a telecommunication system named North Central Connect. And since that time, we have been working with consultants and construction firms to build a fiber system to the home, which will bring Internet speeds of up to 1 gigabit service in the most rural areas in our service area. Along those lines, earlier this year, the state came across coronavirus relief package totaling $125 billion. The legislature quickly recognized the need to employ some of that broadband expansion, which would enable connectivity for those that are telecommuting and those that are participating in this learning, which is the topic of discussion today. The legislature set aside $75 million of that money for broadband expansion, 72 million of which went to electric cooperatives in the form of a matching funds grant called the Mississippi Electric Cooperative COVID-19 Broadband Grant Program. Fifteen electric cooperatives participated in this grant program. North Central was awarded a total of $2.75 million, which we will match dollar for dollar to expand broadband into our service area. It is our goal over the next five to six years to spend a total of $125 billion to run a fiber line to each and every one in our service area. We recently announced the first two phases of our, of our project, which is illustrated on the map in blue. This will begin our construction project out by having a substation, which is at the very top of that, of that blue shaded portion. So we'll tap into the fiber line there, run fiber south down Highway 309 to Redback's Road and then west along Byhedy Road into DeSoto County. As I said before, this will bring Internet speeds to these areas which have very little connectivity. Most of this area was chosen because it's in a census block that was identified by the FCC as being unserved or dis served, meaning that there was less than 25 megabit per second downloads speed service available, which is basically DSL service. So in the process, by the end of 2020, we will have passed 615 homes in rural DeSoto County, which will affect mainly Lewisburg schools and portions of Center Hill schools. As we move west and north, we'll enter into some parts of Alder Branch schools around Nellie Redd area, an area that's sort of immediate Internet service. And as I said, this is a five to six year project totaling $125 billion. So we fully intend to keep rolling along with that. We just wanted to let you know, come here and give an update on broadband connectivity because it will help guide your decisions on virtual learning going forward. There are areas in the copper areas where the new schools being built, north and east, that there are pockets that literally have no service. It's our goal to try and close that digital divide, break connectivity so we can help promote education and telecommuting in the service area. And like I said, 15 other electric cooperatives are doing the same thing across the state. So the electric cooperatives in Mississippi are trying to do our part to solve a problem that has long been present, much like we did for rural electrification areas in the 1940s. On another note, I can answer questions about broadband if you have them or comments. But on another note, I did want to let you know that the electric cooperatives in Mississippi have for 33 years now sponsored a leadership program called National Youth Tour. National Youth Tour is coordinated through our National Trade Association. And it brings over 1,700 students from across the country to our nation's capital for one week. Go on for National Youth Day, get a tour of the nation's capital unlike anything else they can put together on their own dime. But also a part of that through our State Line Association, we have a three-day youth leadership workshop. We take roughly 80 students from across the state and let them see their state government at work, let them meet with their legislators, and network together in team building activities. And we identify those who are good leaders and have leadership potential. So we're in uncertain times and school districts limit on field trips. I'm unsure of whether we'll be able to continue that program this year. So I ask that your consideration in the second semester be that there should be some flexibility within that. Also along those lines, North Central was happy to award a graduating senior scholarship to eight different students. Thank you for your time today. I can answer any questions or comments that you have on the fiber interhead. But I appreciate the opportunity to come brag about what we do.
All right, next on the agenda is Yolanda Reeves.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today to talk about something that I feel so passionate about, my children's education. I have two daughters enrolled at Center Hill High School and Center Hill Middle School. Maya, a 10th grader, and Monica, a 7th grader. Both of my girls have been model students, always striving to achieve and to do their very best, making all A's. However, in light of current events, they have found virtual learning to be challenging, ineffective, and at sometimes almost defeating. When my husband and I decided to allow our children to go virtually, we did it after careful research, prayers, and many questions. We both have grown and see the effects of COVID-19 on a daily basis on mothers. There has been so much loss and so much sickness. So when DeSoto County schools initially mandated, did not mandate the use of mask wearing, we immediately knew that in-person school was not a good choice for our family. However, going virtually has been a challenge. A typical day at the Reeves household starts off like most homes. My girls get up ready, fully charged, and ready to start their day. But for the last six to seven weeks, we have had no instructional classes nor virtual classes for our children. When we chose to allow them to go virtual, I realized that DeSoto County chose asynchronous learning. Well, to me, I understood asynchronous as not providing instructional lessons simultaneously to virtual and in-school learning. However, I did not take it as not teaching at all. Day in and day out, my children have been downloading one PDF file after another, filling in information and sending it back. My 7th grader usually gets five to 10 pages of PDFs from her science teacher to complete every single day with no virtual teaching. How many of you in the 7th grade knew what thermal energy was? Knew what kinetic energy was? How many of you knew how to explain how a refrigerator and cooler works in the refrigerator? How many of you know this now? She spends hours a day trying to complete assignments, but no teacher to help her understand how the lesson is applicable in everyday life. As a parent, I am not a slapper, I am proactive. So when school was originally scheduled to open offices at six, I started calling the board. No one could give me clear, concrete answers. So then I realized after the date change for the start of school that you at the board were not prepared, nor were your teachers. So I waited patiently for someone to give parents something to work with, instructions, guidance, but nothing came. I called the board a second time. This time I called the board the Thursday prior to school starting because again, no instructions, no guidance. Again, I was told, just call your school. Not only did I call my school, I visited on several occasions to no avail. I have reached out to teachers, counselors, secretaries, principals. I have even asked the resource officer, what do we do to ensure that our children get a basic education? I have been told by these people to be patient, be compassionate of the teachers, be understanding. But I ask myself, when will you all do this for us? Where is the patience, the understanding, and the help that we want and need for our children? Just like you want a quality education for your children, we want one for ours. What happened to the assumption that DeSoto County schools are the greatest in the state of Mississippi? How is it that our district has left so many children behind? How is it that when you email a teacher and ask if they will be doing any teaching this year, their answer back to you is, no ma'am, there will be no instructional videos. She is getting the same material and same lessons as my class students. I'm teaching in-class students, online students, and I'm coaching. Ma'am, instructional videos are not required by our district through this platform. Well, I have been patient. And trust me, I don't totally hold the teachers responsible for this lackluster entry into school. Let's be concerned about all of our children. Contrary to what you see on TV or news, we are hardworking, concerned, dedicated, and loving parents who want the best education for our children. When we moved here 13 years ago from Huntsville, we were told that this was the greatest school in the state of Mississippi. I was led to believe that this district will fight for and provide for all of our children. Mr. Usleton, during your election, your reputation surpassed you. I was told that you were one to turn things around, one who would fight for all of our children. But I must confess that during this pandemic, I have not witnessed these attributes. I have spoken to several parents and it seems that all of our virtual kids are struggling because no one is willing to help them. They are being forced to return to school because of a lack of support from the school district. When virtual school was offered to our children, I had no idea that virtual to you meant online for us. An online education is one that is usually afforded to adults who are seeking a master's or doctorate education. Online school should not be a substitute for virtual learning. In researching, according to the Equity and Distance Learning Act, DeSoto County was afforded $150 million plus. This act was put in place to ensure that all students and teachers with the technology and professional development necessary to ensure that all have access to high-quality distance learning aligned to the safe standards. Reports are showing that there is growing evidence that core planning, coupled with insufficient tech resources, are diminishing day through twelve. In the last several weeks, you guys have failed us. You have failed our children. You have not provided an equitable education to our children. We have been forced to choose between our children's safety, their lives, and their education. Mr. Usleton, a great leader doesn't try to control, but he must guide children into ultimate success. I'm not asking for a handout or any special consideration for my children. I'm asking for a basic education. I am asking for what you, this board, and this state promise them. The motto of the Mississippi Department of Education is to ensure a bright future for every child. Where is the breakdown between us as a county and us as a state? This pandemic is no fault of any of us, yet I feel like our children are the ones that were suffering the most. Every, every year that my children have enrolled in DeSoto County school, they receive rules upon rules about how to behave, consequences of what would happen if they don't follow those rules, yet they receive nothing when it comes to learning a new system, nothing when it comes to instructional teaching. Why was there never a parent ensuing training from the school to be platform? Why are there no additional teachers, aides, or subs to implement virtual learning? Why is there no synchronous online learning? Why have you not made amends, reallocated, or repurposed funding for virtual learning? An equitable education means that you should afford the stakeholders, also known as our children, the same tools that you provide children that are in-school learning. Do our children not deserve an equitable education because their parents decided to try and keep them safe by not attending school in person? If you constrain live board meetings, why can't you streamline live classes? Why can't you use the conference feature of your school and have teachers record themselves teaching daily for review by virtual students? Devices and PDF files do not equate to quality instructional delivery, nor is it equitable. Mr. Usleton, my charge to you today is for you to do what you promised us. I challenge you to be the visionary, to have a futuristic vision and know how to turn your ideas into real-world success stories. I challenge you to know the way, go the way, and show the way to all of our children. I challenge you to have empathy for our children, empathy for us as parents. I challenge you to go over and beyond and provide all of our kids a quality education. We may not have made the same decision about how our children are to learn this year, but we all have the same goal as parents, and that is to see that our children succeed. I knew that virtual learning was not going to be easy, but what I didn't anticipate was that we were not going to get any help from the school system. This is an unprecedented, uncharted time for us all, yet at the end of our day, our children will be the ones impacted by this the most. I believe that all children are created equal, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of a quality education. Thank you.
Next, we have Delania Wilton.
Ms. I'm, I'm a work on central, um, Bernard, the lady from their daughter. That part of that, um, little ribbon, our girls are. We're not from here, we're not the coach's daughter, friend, the teacher and all that. Our kids are truly smart, there are not lessons given to them, they, we don't know you from Adam. So when they test, when they get in school, they get all A's. My daughter's an AB student, she's in the achievement, whatever that club is. She's in the achievement, whatever that club is. She did that this year for Bay Club. She's done all of that. She plays sports, so she is sports and smart. Also, it's hands down for me, hands down for me, there's nothing, my child is a gift from God, and there's nothing, no school, no nothing, could put her life in danger. I don't know what is political with DeSota County. I'm sorry to hear that. I'm seeing that. This is sad. I talked to Mr. Russellton two years ago. He might remember me. When I first came to school, my husband's job came here. FedEx moved him here. He's a manager at FedEx. So they moved us here. I worked in the school. I didn't have to work anymore. I'm blessed with that. And I've seen kids that needed food. They needed, I talked with you about, I paid them lunch. Oh, you can't do that. This is a baby. This is a child. And I can't pay for their lunch because their parents didn't send them money? Or they didn't want to fill out the form because people gossip too much to tell somebody's business? You don't know what someone's going through. I come from a humble beginning. I am truly blessed now, and I know where I came from. I know where my help comes from. And I'm seeing that it's all God. But when I'm seeing that, because my daughter is an AP student, I had, that would mean that, oh, so it's my child. Oh, I don't need any help in virtual learning. I don't care about anybody else. If they don't go to school, they won't get any help. But Sycamore Hill Middle School, that woman's child, that lady's child, would never got the reward if it wasn't for them. Seventh grade, I think Mr. Strickland just said, Mr. Hood came. He brought my daughter in and said, I want you to score what you scored last year. Because she almost got a perfect score. I was felt kind of unjust with that because I know she had a good day. I know she's intelligent. But to put pressure on that child like that, that did something to me. So that's money in your pocket. Are you really happy for this child? Or is this money in your pocket? You gave these kids a pizza party. I'm trying to understand this, what's going on with DeSota County. Like they said, we were moved here. So what school should we go to? We met a lot of people from Memphis. When I lived in Atlanta for nineteen years, when I rented from Illinois, we said, let's go to them. What schools are good? DeSota County was chosen. Now they're looking very bad. They try to look at men's school, oh, they're this, they're that. But I think there's a lot of undercover coming here, and it's showing right now. I think God's revealing a lot of stuff in this pandemic, in this world, period. DeSota County, I'm so sad that we feel bad. You're not ready, and it's sad that you had months to get ready. I can see if you didn't, but you did. Where is the money? I want to know the question. I heard the governor on the news, and I heard they had a financial... We don't have any computers. I'm like, really? It's not going to be virtual. It's not virtual learning, just like they said, because my daughter did it. I understand what these parents are doing. Their kids are not getting it. Because I'm not selfish to the ones saying, oh, well, as long as my child get it, I don't care about anybody else. And that's how we feel when these kids are not getting this virtual learning. Because they are with their parents, which, like I said, it got their gift. I'm not going to put my child in danger because I feel they were bullied when this young lady was talking about volleyball. And the same way they talked with my daughter. She loves drama. She was in plays in seventh, eighth grade. This year, she's sophomore. She wanted to do theater instead of basketball. That was great. Leave that alone, but she couldn't do it. But you, they were bullied. I hear parents say, well, if you can't, you go ahead and come to school. If you don't come to school, you can't play. The young lady said, you don't know what they're doing outside the school. They're not even doing it in the school. Like Ms. Reed said, and me and my husband made the same decision. She came to the school, the teachers running around with no masks on. So do you really know that they're doing what they're supposed to do? I see these changes. I got video of kids, pictures of kids at practice, dance practice with no masks on. They're close together. So don't tell me that they're doing what they're supposed to do because they're not. And I hate to have that for some because I like Centerville, but it's just showing that people are not, and DeSota County is not doing their job. I'm also saying, when you said, when the man said, oh, we're doing good with the... What did you say? With the testing and saying, no one got sick? You said it's volunteer. Volunteer means I might not want to report. It's not mandated. So I don't understand what you're saying, volunteer, we're open, but you're not. You're not. If somebody's volunteer, somebody's not telling the truth somewhere. I would love it for us to go back to school, but virtual learning is virtual learning. This is not virtual learning. And I was hoping that we came here and got some answers. Like the gentleman said, he need to make a decision for his child. Mine won't go back, thank God. But I haven't heard from a teacher also. It was sad, my husband had to email Mr. Payne, a teacher got pulled from drug ed. We didn't even know she was gone, but she gave my child a zero. But she wasn't even there. The teachers, they didn't even inform us they had a new teacher. Oh, we're going to get somebody. Someone called my husband. Oh, yeah, we're getting somebody. But if we wasn't parents to watch what you're doing, nothing ever would have been said. Nothing would ever would have been done. The teacher's gone from the school, and nobody informed us that she's going to have a new teacher. Oh, we're looking at the grades now. But if we wasn't a parent to watch that cared about our kids, what would you do? What would you do if it was your child? Somebody gave you a zero. Just like they said she wasn't there attendance. She's there every day. We're there. We're present enough to be at home with our child. Some parents are not, and it's not fair. So we know she comes in every day. And then the teacher said, oh, I got to go back and change that. Mark the absence. I don't know what, do you give more money if they're in school or virtual? It should be the same. I don't know what's going on, but it doesn't look good for this county. I'm a taxpayer, just like they are. It's sad. It's sad to say something I used to brag on, and I'm seeing this blue ribbon, but I know my daughter's a part of that. So show us the same way we have done for you, our children. It's not about the parent. It's about the child. And this is something that God put on us as a nation, as a world. So I don't know what you need to do to give her, pray? Everybody got, God, we trust. Trust in them and do right by our kids. And this is where I'm going to end. Isaiah 54:17, no weapons formed against us prosper. So I pray for all of you to do right and do right by these kids. Thank you.
All right, our last question here is Chuck Ford, who gets punished?
Okay, Madam Chair, Mr. Russellton, Board, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. When I asked to speak, I had no idea that I would be blessed to hear you. To hear parents literally share their heart. And I do feel blessed, so I thank you for that. So I had three thoughts on my way here, and I want to share those three thoughts with you and then share some information about our partnership. The first thought was that years ago, when I first had the opportunity to fly a little bit, when I would be in the airport, they would talk about those alerts. The alerts would change, and whatever... The alerts would change, I would look around and see who might be an educator, because if there is truly an emergency, I want to be around an educator. Because educators are caring people, they're nurturing. They spend their lives doing that. The second thought I had was I had the opportunity to, in some capacity, work in your district for the last thirteen years in some way. And I said thirteen years ago, and I'll say it again today, on a bad day, this is the best district I go to. And then the third thing that I would share is, and I've said this for years, the winners win and the others don't. And what I mean by that is the folks that win tend to keep winning. They may have bumps in the road, but they continue to do that. So I want to put that together and then share just a few things about our work. The efforts, this pandemic, this thing that we're going through that we're hearing about, it's not good. And it has been an emergency. And what a blessing it's been for me to be around to watch what schools are doing and then to watch what your district's doing to try to deal with this pandemic so that kids can learn. And then this district was an A district going into COVID. Mr. Russellton, I'm not trying to put any pressure on you, but it will be an A district on the other side of COVID. And it will be. And then part of it will be because you have the energy. You've got the passion from the parents. Education matters here. That's a problem that we have throughout the state, throughout the country. It doesn't matter that much in all places, but it does here. And I hope that we all understand that that is a blessing. So what I'd like to share with you, I represent Kids First Education, and we have now fortunate to have a partnership with your district that started in September. And so the way that we work and the way that we are working, we started working in your district in September to help primarily with this virtual piece, is that we follow our three C's success model. We collaborate. We create a plan, and we commit. And I have to tell you, as we collaborated, there's something that came out, and I heard it from the parents, and I'll share it with you. And that is, you heard parents say that some teachers are doing it, some teachers are not. And part of the issue there is that they came to the plate with different skills. Some had prior knowledge, some were easy with technology, and some were not. And so for some, it's a bigger learning curve. And I'm just telling you what I see, not just in your district, but in all districts, and that's a problem. And so that's one thing that we're committed as we work in your district to help with, and that will get better. And then we've been fortunate and blessed and humbled, really, that you have allowed us to come in beginning in September to work in your schools. And we're in each school one day a week, working with teachers. And I have to tell you that in this work I've done for thirteen years, I've never seen a time when teachers were more appreciative than being here today. I know why. Because they feel what these parents have shared. They feel that that's a struggle. Mr. Russellton said that they're working long hours, longer than they've ever worked. They're having to do things they've never done before. And I commend them for the effort, and they will get there. The winners win and the others don't. And you will make it. You will push through with the energy that you have. And then here's some of the things we're working on, but not limited to this list, with teachers that are there, and some of those things, honestly, we never thought about years ago. And part of what we're dealing with, I'll share this with the parents too. If you go in and you Google something called "twenty-one things that will become obsolete in 2020," I'm going to repeat that, "twenty-one things that will become obsolete in 2020." That was written in 2009. I used to put it in presentations, and sure enough, it's come to pass. But the bulk of those came to pass all at one time, and it's too much. But we will make it. It will happen. The winners win and the others don't. And on a bad day, this is the best place I go. And so I have confidence that you will do that, and you have the energy. And so make no mistake, the energy that you have, and what I was blessed to hear, will be part of what fuels that, because that is helpful, that is healthy to know. And we will make it through, and you will make it through, and it will get better. Some of the things that are on there, it's been overwhelming, and I heard this called out, is calling parents. And the issue is, they're not accustomed to doing that. We're going to have to get better with that. And the parents are asking for that. And so those communication things, those lessons, all those things, they will get better. They are learning. I'm listening to our team. I know that we send to Mr. Russellton once a week, and I hope that comes on to you, the progress that they're making. But you have a large district, and it is a slower turn. That's not an excuse, but that's something that I know that you want to make sure that you get it done as quickly as possible, and we are proud to partner with you to do that. And it's jobbing, job embedded. The work is job embedded. So we're in there with those teachers. And make no mistake, I watched as the parents spoke, and I saw you taking notes. And I want you to know that I took notes too. And I'll make sure that my team understands some of the key pieces that they can reinforce and help with as they go. And these are just some of the statements that were made, that were collected from teachers, just a sampling. And as I said before, I don't think at any time since I've been doing this, I have seen parents or teachers or administrators, rather, that were more appreciative of that help, that assistance, because as you heard, it is a difficult, difficult time. And so with that, I want to thank you for that opportunity. Thank you for what you do for the students of DeSota County Schools. And I'm here to address the board, but thank you, parents, for having heart and making education a priority in your homes, because that'll trickle, and that's one of the reasons that, and I'll say this lastly, that the winners win and the others don't. And you will do that. If you've ever received an email from me or you heard me speak, then you know how I'm going to end, and I truly mean this. On every signature line, it's always the same. Have a blessed day, and I hope that you do and I pray that you do. And talk soon, my friends, because I hope that we meet again soon. So thank you for the opportunity to address.
Thank you. All right, now I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should enter executive session for the following matters: the attorney's contract matter, a residency appeal, student discipline, the request to appear, and early graduations. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chase will come back and inform you whether we stay in executive session. The recess meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October fifteenth at 10:00 a.m. Here's the boardroom.